Yeah.
Whoops. We're recording a lot of that.
Hey.
Hey.
There we go. Okay. Okay, everybody ready? Okay, let's start the October tenth meeting with the pledge, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the October tenth. Board of Supervisors Meeting of Middle Smithfield Township. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda unless anyone has any amendments.
Sure.
Any comments or questions or in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-sixth. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Pat, can we please have a report of the executive session?
Sure, the board met an executive session meeting before this evening's meeting. Uh, no decisions were made, no votes were taken, and the executive session had to do with that information.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items from anyone? Yes, Debbie?
I just wondered, the highlights of flags and over by the community center, but why do they hang so awkwardly? Like in reverse as opposed to a final poll, I think.
So when you look at um, flag etiquette, the square of the stars goes away from the building. If you're hanging it on the road, it goes away from the building.
See?
Or a sidewalk. So that's why it's it's that. So and we figured we we try it because we had um, and we, we didn't ha- we don't have, the banners are double hangers and we don't have them all filled. So we thought, you know, rather than purchasing a banner, we we would try the the flag rather than purchase a banner that looks like the flag.
Wow.
So we thought we'd try it.
They just looked awkward, but now I understand there's a reason we got this.
Yeah. So I'm happy to hear from any Charlie, you're a veteran, you served, yes?
Mm-hmm.
So you could go take over, take. We're happy that, we're happy to make any improvements. So uh, any other public comment on non-agenda items before we begin?
Please. I'm ready to answer. I applied to be uh, involved in volunteer position.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you. Did you give your application in? You did? Oh, thanks. Thank you. Charlie, welcome aboard.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Um, any other uh, public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody? Okay, um, so just a a few announcements, we, and we have things over on the side. Including the flyers for the Bushkill Emergency Corps Gala, which is October twenty-sixth. Which seems to be a very busy day because there's also the Lions Club Meet and Brie. And the NAACP has a ball also. Uh, the township newsletter is out for fall, so anyone who didn't get one, we're happy to mail one to you. Over at the community center, uh, Fossil Day, uh, in celebration of Fossil Day, which usually falls in October, we make the whole month about the mastodon. Memory makers just happened last Saturday, so uh, if anyone would like a program, we've got those. And thank you to our speakers, uh, Debbie Gluck and Danny Younger, who spoke about the history of medicine in Monroe County. So thank you for that. I'll let Mike address a thousand feet of street, which is also successful last weekend.
Yep, we had uh, I guess forty people there, uh, but again, we've had people throughout the year. Playing various roles, uh, who also had a significant effort on two oh nine with the grant that's not awarded.
Um, also, uh, coming up this Saturday is the Thousand Light Pink Walk at Lehman Park. To raise awareness and money for President Mancer. Uh, and the township is now fully engaged with text Mike up. So we've got a few flyers over on the side. So now, instead of sending messages via Facebook or something like that, you can simply text the township and anytime of day or night, most likely you'll get an answer back right away. So that's terrific. Before, you could only, uh, we could only send messages to the public and now the public can text us back. So that's good. Um, and then Mark, uh, you have an announcement, uh, zoning hearing board has a public hearing on the twenty-second. Right, October twenty-second for six two five seven Lakeshore Drive. Um, and lastly, uh, we are now preparing our budget, so you can go ahead and take a look at when the budget meetings are, they coincide with the supervisor workshops. We did have one recently changed from Friday to a a Wednesday, but mostly they'll be Fridays at eight o'clock. And I believe that's, that's it.
Also cleanup.
Oh yeah, that's right, that's this weekend.
Yeah, tomorrow and Saturday.
So, okay. Um. For more in-depth information on what's going on with the committees, you can take a look at the committee and department reports, those are over on the side table. Um, I'll make a motion to accept all the committee and department reports. As written.
Sure.
Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And Michelle, is there any correspondence?
During the United Way uh, care giving, the, some of the township staff went to the motor center and painted and the township received a thank you card from Merle and a staff over at the center that they received many compliments on the colorful paint that was used and it is a eye-opener breath, refreshing uh, type of porch now. And the volunteers um, were awesome. It is what she had written. She just said, thank you very much. Everybody there is very grateful for the work that was done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, treasurers require.
Okay, I make a motion from our general count, three hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and six cents.
Any comments or questions on favor?
Aye.
That will lead the next general count to Wilson's board.
I'll make a motion uh, to pay fifty dollars to reimburse Michael Dwyer for the sleigh and reindeer we bought for the twenty twenty-four tree life.
Sir.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
I understand.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion from our suit account, eighty-four thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll second. Is that EV? Is it an EV sleigh?
No, I don't know.
All right, so I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. We'll make a motion from our account, seven thousand four hundred sixteen dollars.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion from our field account, eighty-two thousand six hundred fourteen dollars and three cents.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion from our EMS fire account, one hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion from our foreign fire account, ninety-eight thousand foreign forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so listeners report.
Thank you. The first item under my report is the proposed ordinance amended chapter one fifty for uh, short-term rentals and requirements for the installation use of a noise monitor on the property. Uh, we talked about this at the last meeting or two. Uh, since the last meeting, I did revise the draft ordinance. And now the noise monitor is encouraged to be installed at a short-term rental until if the township receives two noise complaints deemed uh, to be credible by the township, then the noise monitor is required to be installed by a short-term rental uh, property owner. Uh, are there any questions or comments on the revised version of the ordinance?
No, I think it's ripe for adoption, no?
Well, it's not advertised. So if the board wanted to proceed with uh, adopting this ordinance, the next step would be to authorize it to be advertised for a public hearing.
Is that something you'd like to do, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Are you making the motion?
Motion.
Uh, second, comments or questions? All in favor? Yes, sir.
I know it's for certain rentals.
Yes.
I have several people that are silver jacket of my housing council bad ass about noise from people actually parts for her, who actually live in these areas. Is there some ordinance for them? Some are trying to level with someone who had a common problem with the neighbor.
That's addressed under the nuisance, isn't it?
No, no, it's, it's under the zone. I think it's actually a zone ordinance. Were you talking about noise or?
Music playing very loud, you know, just way up into this one house three times in July during their living room. And it's beyond the woods behind the other house, as the resident that owned the house, not, not a rent.
So in Middle Smithfield, Middle Smithfield Township, the noise regulations currently are found in zoning ordinance. Uh, so it would be uh, an enforcement process with the zoning officer, although I think this board has discussed amendments uh, to its nuisance ordinance, which would incorporate some noise provisions as well, but that ordinance has not been adopted yet. Uh, but it has something that's been discussed at least uh, preliminarily by this board.
I just figured, I mean, I've gone through what they said in the name, they said it just probably happened, so it's getting more and more frustrating.
You got a lawnmower?
No, don't encourage that.
I put your speaker over.
It's adjustable.
You can always get a good, good audio or video recorded, you know, accordingly, and attach that to the file for parcel.
Yeah.
Get a couple of those there and all of a sudden the zoning officer has good reason to write the letter, at least notice warning.
Have they contacted the zone?
Yes, they have. Someone did go out there once.
Hmm.
And it was a word or exchange that weren't pleasant.
Wow.
How terrible to do that should be a little more on the problem.
Yes, correct.
What specific, what specific noises are they monitoring? What's their, what's their complaint?
You mean for the people or or?
They have noise monitor.
For, for the, oh, just, just, it doesn't matter, it's just, yeah.
So in the zoning ordinance right now is where uh, Middle Smithfield regulates noise levels and there's certain decibel limitations depending upon the zoning district that you're in. So I think the intent is to have a noise monitor on these properties to, in the event that there's complaints, to help or assist the owner in catching, you know, tenants that are too loud before it becomes a complaint.
Hmm.
I believe that's the intent.
Hmm.
Hmm. I'm still, I'm still, as, for as long as we've been dealing with short-term, I'm, I'm the impression that ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent of owners want to be good, good neighbors. They don't want to have discrimination going on on their property and anything we can do to help them. And even a couple of times we've had to go and, and go towards a violation with people, they wanted to make good. But they already had a couple of strikes against them. So this noise monitor, when it gets to two strikes being required, will help that. And, you know, it's going to be suggested in the application that they pick one up initially, even when they start up a short terminal. Can't do anything but help them.
Well, the rea- the reason I ask is from the noise monitor, and you know, I've been here before, I, I talked about the shooting right next to your house.
Yes.
And that doesn't seem to get any, any response from anybody, but some way by any loud music does. I was just wondering, was there, was there anything almost done, said or thought about? You know, limiting, I'm not saying just people shouldn't shoot on their property, but not a hundred people in your house.
Well, uh, it, there was a few meetings, uh, where we addressed, we talked about it, but you weren't present. I don't know if you'd like to sum it up?
Sure, so, um, there is a draft ordinance right now uh, that this board is holding off on. It, it follows very closely another municipality's ordinance addressing that concern. Uh, however, that municipality and that ordinance is currently making its way up to the court system. Uh, so Middle Smithfield is uh, preferring to kind of wait and see what happens with that court case before they adopt the ordinance.
And if you're asking about what kind of noise the ordinance identifies, uh, market, yeah, it's a continuous noise. So things like um, people using hand tools. You, you're allowed to have a chainsaw, just not um, twenty-four seven.
Not twenty-four seven.
Yeah, you're allowed to.
You know, the, the, the shooting noise is just go right, sort of with the dog barking and the, you know, they may, the dog may bark for ten minutes and then not bark for two hours and then ten minutes, you know, they're just, they're nuisance things, so. That's the ordinance that we're trying to look at. The continuous, the continuous noise, I think we've got to.
I'm thinking shooting, don't get me wrong, I, I think there should be some kind of a, and I said this before, some kind of a distance that they have to be. I mean, right now, I have a neighbor that's probably a hundred fifty yard or more, and he might shoot perhaps an hour, maybe an hour. And I can hear my house. I mean, it doesn't, it means it's not that loud, when you go outside, when you try to sell your pork or something, it gets kind of annoying after a while. So at least, at least right now, probably a hundred fifty yards or better, and he's moving a shooting lane about a hundred fifty feet from my house. So uh, I have to put up with it, but I'm just thinking, what if he was fifty feet from my house? I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these developments are, the houses are pretty close, and you come a hundred, a hundred fifty feet, and somebody walks out of their house and puts a backstop up and starts shooting for an hour and a half. Gets pretty annoying.
Yeah.
But I just think something should be looked at.
Yeah.
Talked about whatever, and if they say, well, no, we're not going to do it, then that's fine, then that's your decision. But I think the need to be addressed.
I agree.
Not easy. I, I, I just had a situation in my house and my, the back of my property is all tree and I, I could hear this bang, bang, light sound, like more like a pellet gun than even a twenty-two probably, and I walked down on the back porch and all of a sudden I hear other guys coming. Here comes a guy. So they were shooting and the only place they could shoot was onto my property because their property is wide open. And there are other parcels there on their property, so.
Now, this guy supposedly has a backstop and he seems like a nice enough guy. But it's just the fact that it's, it's a constant noise for maybe a half an hour or an hour and a half.
I mean, this was going on.
Three guys shooting and then hundreds around the ignition, and gets kind of nerve-wracking after a while, and he's a hundred fifty yards. I, I understand, okay, that's fine. But for, to move a hundred fifty feet closer to me, knowing it's, it's an aggravation? I, I think there's, I mean, there's some places you can shoot and some places you can't. I think there should be a definite township ordinance that says, okay, is it a hundred fifty feet? Is it a hundred fifty yards? Is it fifty feet?
Okay.
That's all, I mean.
Thank you.
Hmm.
So there's been a motion and a second and discussion. Any other comments or questions from the meeting? Uh, yes.
As, as long as we're talking about noise and, and Pat, um, what, what, is there any ordinances for the ATVs going up and down roads at crazy speeds really loud?
Yeah, they're not supposed to be.
Do we have anything?
Love you.
Yeah, yeah, ATVs aren't, are supposed to be on private properties, they're not.
No, they're always going up and down our road.
State police, is there a law?
Well, yeah, it's.
If it's, kind of, we're not allowed, the numbers.
It's not, you know, like it's a road off of Cool Lot.
Yeah.
What would that involve?
Yeah, no, they, they, it's to Cool Lot to go, but, you know, they're, and, and I wouldn't mind, I don't even care about the noise. If they just want to slow on our road, which, you know, we have animals and kids and, and, and they're just like fast. And I don't know if there's anything we can do. I mean, I don't know if they're.
Yeah, they, they.
Their response on whether they're coming to get her.
I understood, but, I mean, it doesn't matter what we put on paper, I mean.
Right, right.
I understand. Although those people don't pay them.
The more complaints they get, the more they know they have an issue somewhere. If we just sit around and let it happen without calling the state police, and it's going to continue to happen, at least if it's on record, you can say, I called, you know, October tenth, I called October twelfth, I called the fourteenth. You know, seems to be between the hours of, you know, five and seven.
We think some of it might be um, these uh, the short-term rental. You know, that it.
So I would definitely create a record then. You could do it with the state police and you can do it with the township too. You can submit a, a zone.
That is actually.
Yeah.
Right. In my name, okay. All right, great, thank you.
So quick, one more question, Mark, because the person, one of the people that has yelled at me different center here right now, we've turned everything in numerous times, actually know which house it is, so they're asking, who did they contact directly? They parked up here to down there. So who can they contact? That's what I'm being asked right now. There's someone that called and speaks to our people too.
For what?
I'm sorry?
For the noise, uh, excuse me, I have information on the noise that we contact. I gave them everything this summer, the previous summer, they know which house it is.
See, see, that's exactly, and I don't need to be looking about it, but I gave them everything last summer, I gave them everything this summer. Generally what happens is we get a note, we get a call up there. We send an, a friendly note, not a notice of violation, but a note, and, you know, we got to complain about this, please help us out. If we don't hear anything back from that person saying, the heck with you, I'm not going to deal with this. And we don't hear again from the person who's complaining for another year, we're going to leave if things are, things are taken care of.
We're talking about.
I mean, we will go to the next, you know, we will go to the notice of violation, but, you know, I, I hear that a lot more than I hear thank you for taking care of the problem, or even people complaining.
I can tell you firsthand, I sat when they called in the one time during the summer, so I know that, and it worked just a, a year ago, again, they called.
Right.
They actually have work. When we call in, they give a message, they turn in, they actually have work.
Yeah, one, one thing to keep in mind is we're, you're assuming that there's a violation. I mean, you may make a complaint, maybe the township goes in, out there, do you have a noise meter? And, and you, you measure what the noise is at the property line and it doesn't exceed what's permitted by the decibels, I mean, it, there could not, maybe there's just, I mean, everyone differs with respect to how they view noise. Some people are offended by a certain level and others people aren't. Uh, so there has to be violation for the township to be able to do anything, and unfortunately, right now in the zoning ordinance, those violations, the violation would be subject to certain thresholds of the decimal readings on that monitor.
The monitor on our property.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I believe the board made a motion second, and I don't think you voted on it.
No, we did not.
This was to advertise the draft short-term rental amendment ordinance uh, for adoption.
Yes. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, does it matter which meeting you want it advertised for? I think, Michelle, do we have one being advertised for the November ninth meeting?
Seventh. It's November seventh.
Is it right? Just make sure the notice is right.
Yeah.
It's only in the ninth.
Actually about seventh and, yeah, it is.
Okay.
So the sidewalk ordinance is the seventh, no?
Yes.
Okay.
So the question is, do you, this is, this is standalone, so you could probably advertise it in time for the seventh, if you want to do them both on the same night.
Sounds good to me. One trip for the stenographer.
Thank you. The next item under my report is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, article four. Um, as the board's aware, we've been going through article by article uh, for the draft zoning ordinance amendment. This article four is actually the last article for you to get through, and we're towards the end. I think the board was between your last work session in this evening, you were going to look to see if you have any thoughts, concerns, revisions to the newly proposed uh, use titled uh, small and large uh, logistics center. And I think that is, this is, does, is the direction, what is the direction or the thoughts from the board on this?
The discussion we had was we, we're going to do large logistical centers in I.
Right.
And then we had to make a decision on where we wanted to go in small, steps, and how big was small going to be.
So small.
By definition.
And we could ask the county because there are, we just came across somebody else who was, let me just see who that was. That went and did the same thing. Uh, just a second.
Shoot. I did not bring my definition section with me, and that's where that answer would be. Shoot. I can forward it up.
Look at ECO? Look ECO?
No, it wouldn't be adopted yet. This is a draft.
Oh, 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 oh.
I can.
I, I see. Your definition.
Yeah, see, the thing is, this is article four, and the definition for the small and large logistics center will be in the definition section article, and I didn't bring that with me this evening. I failed on that part. Uh, I can easily send that to you tomorrow. I apologize for that.
So here you go, Toncanic just uh, proposed an amendment to its zoning ordinance concerning truck terminal distribution centers. So they wanted to divide the uses into small and large scale facilities with threshold of fifty thousand square feet. That was their threshold.
So fifty thousand square feet is small?
Large.
Now, forty thousand square feet is less than fifty thousand is small?
Yes. Yeah.
That's pretty big.
Maybe at Toncanic, but we don't have that kind of land area.
Yeah, we don't have the land area to put fifty thousand square feet on. I mean, there's only a couple of parts, I mean, don't get me wrong.
The entire industrial section is fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Right.
So the small scaling would want where? C one?
I don't know, that one, that's what I said.
Or C two? Hmm.
Yeah, that's up to the board. As, as you can see, the draft ordinance, I left blame for the small logistics centers, the large logistics centers I put in the industrial.
I, I think all logistics centers should be industrial. I mean, I think it, it, it would detract from commercial. Um, to have.
Yeah, I would hate to put it in C one.
Facility sitting next to, you know, Duncan Donald's, where it is. I think it would look horrible.
So small logistics and large logistics, just in the I industrial? Yes. All right, and small logistics conditional use al- also, I have the large logistics center as a conditional use. Do you want to have small?
Yes.
Yes, as a conditional user, just a permit by right?
No, conditional.
Conditional.
Okay. There's another blank with respect to uh, woodland, the definition of woodlands. I don't know if you have a definition anywhere in credit ordinance, so to the extent that you don't, we may want to add one. There's a blank with respect to parking, but that just needs to be filled in with the appropriate section site. If you look on, in section fifteen, site access, all large logistics centers shall have access to and from. Did you want to require them to have direct access onto arterial, like however, however you have roadways designated in Middle Smithfield?
There's only one, one road.
Two and I.
No.
No.
Final fault. That's it.
One of the calls, two, two, nine.
And what is that, a collector? Is that an ulterior?
I guess it's a secondary, I wouldn't call it.
Okay, well then maybe we can remove this.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
There's only one one road there.
You're saying one road that goes into the industrial district?
Correct.
Okay. We have the next plank with respect to the burns and landscaping just needs a section number of site two. That might be it with respect to blanks. Now, obviously, if you want to subtract out like we just did for the site access or add two. You can. This is just my. Uh. Draft form. If there were. Sections that you don't think fit for Middle Smithfield, or if you want to add certain sections or provisions that you don't see in here yet. Um, we can do that.
Yeah.
And then because.
Right, right.
So because you are proceeding with the adoption of the. Large and small logistics centers, your truck terminal. Use will be removed.
Remo.
Because this it would include a truck terminal. And your, the question is wholesale warehousing. Remove that one as well.
We're not. Set up that, I mean, if they. You know, this land, you know, rezoned in the future, then they'll have to deal with it, but not the way we're set up now.
Right, so that works. The only other provisions further on. That you can see were tracks. Um. Are the the solar energy system that we already, that was a recent amendment. And I thought there was. Some changes to home based. Businesses, both no impact and low impact, but nothing. That was more just cleanup. So are there any other questions or comments on any of the remaining provisions of article four?
I have none.
Okay, so with that, uh, what I will start doing. Is packaging all of the articles. Now that we've gotten through them all, I'll start packaging them in a large zoning ordinance amendment, not granted amendment. Uh. Circulate it. There may be, if you recall, some of the times we went through some of these articles, there's some blanks or. Follow up discussion that were needed, but we can start doing that now that we have a.
Yeah.
Got through all the.
How about, you know, table uses?
You went through that a while ago, but we can.
Through again.
We can go through it. We're definitely going to have to go through again. And then how about the map? Well, we're not, this isn't proposing to amend the map. No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
Because so many times we get into, well, when was the last time we?
What I, what I would do.
Review it.
What what I can do is when I package this into a comprehensive zoning amendment now. Uh, I'll include the table abuses because that'll be one of the appendices in the ordinance, but I'll also include the zoning map. Uh, that I have. That right now we're not, I haven't looked at the zoning map for any amendments, uh, but well circulated if you want to look through it and. And make a decision as to whether or not the board wants to incorporate a zoning map change as part of this. I will say. There are certain, there are different. Procedures and steps that we'll have to follow with the adoption. If this is more than just a tax amendment. If it's a map amendment too, there'll be some additional.
Well, I wouldn't say a map amendment. I would just like to say reviewed.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty two. So when, I think the next time we get past the last time you looked at your zoning map.
Okay. Alright, so that's what I'll do. What I, I'll circulate the definitions of large and small logistic centers tomorrow. Uh, and I'll start packaging the comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment. So we can look at it more as a whole now and fill in any blanks and follow up with any other further discussions we need. Uh, but we've gotten through. At least for the mayor. Alright, are there any other questions or comments for me on that topic?
My Christmas?
Thank you. My Christmas, you might be ready to forward it to the county for me.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, there's no engineer, so no engineer's report. Uh, old business, just um some revitalized two oh nine things. Uh, Ace Hardware looks spectacular now that it's all been painted and redone, so. We look forward to receiving their paperwork. Done an outstanding job. Um, barely used tires, so uh that business owner is is on pause for now. Because he's running the business by himself, so he's not had time to gather what we need to move forward with. With what he wants to do. Um, and Mobile Gas is the board ready to move forward? With that, um, I don't see in the packets though, uh, he has all the paperwork together, Mobile Gas, to remove and replace the siding on the building. So, but I don't see.
No, you guys, that all of that last Friday. I didn't get anything new from James. That I had provided last week.
Alright, did, does Pat have it? Do you have it?
I have it in my, I don't think I brought last month's packet with me.
No, it was Friday. It was last Friday. And I didn't, I didn't bring that with me in here.
I have the application.
Who's the, the three of us discussed it at workshop and then said, let's go, you know, take a walk. And then.
No, I. I. Oh, we're doing a little over, right?
Yeah.
I think our question was, you know, how does committee can know?
And James came in. He explained it and the way my recollection and what the notes reflect is that. Uh, since he was doing the entire building, we were happy to reimburse for the one side he asked for.
The side facing two and a.
Yeah.
In the, in the, I don't have it in front of me.
Mobile has their three quotes. Everything was in order. I think the.
The rarest quotes from Teresa Aprica.
Yeah, I think the board was ready to act two weeks ago, but there were questions regarding the reading system from the committee.
And the discussion is the quotes are for all four sides of the building, right? And the discussion was maybe whatever the potential. Right, would be, it would be for the one side, whatever the percentages for that side facing two and a.
The quote was for the one side. But he told us that the the intent was to do, like, he sectioned off the project.
I thought the quote was for all four sides.
No, he's only doing one side.
Of what we got.
Correct. The three thousand square feet is what he's looking at here.
And he's. He spoke to James and said his intent was to do the whole thing. That was, remember James came in in our.
Right.
Workshop.
He's doing the whole thing. He's doing the whole thing no matter what he gets.
Yes. Yes.
Right.
But because the project side size can only be twenty thousand, that's what he submitted.
Yeah, that that can't be right. Three thousand square feet is is. Got to be a whole building.
Well, my my recollection, when I looked at the packet from the last meeting. I thought at least one of the quotes said for all.
Yes.
Sides.
I mean, even the building's fifty feet long, ten feet high, that's only five hundred square feet. But the three thousand has got to be the entire building.
Right.
So I I would probably say it's. He's got to, he's got to break this down just so we know what we're paying for. Because the the bid is for the entire. That's the way I see it and and I I wouldn't want to act on it, not understanding what is acting on quite honestly. So they're going to have to clarify that and then we'll take it up again next time.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table.
Correct.
Sorry.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay.
What's the three thousand square feet?
One more? You've got your.
Sure. Resolution ten twenty twenty four, volunteer appointment to the zoning hearing board. That'd be kind of what we, we talked about that last month and. It requires a resolution, so make a motion.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay.
We'd like to authorize a formal investigation and examination of dangerous and dilapidated structures by the zoning and building code department.
Second. Any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Didn't qualify for the. Two oh nine.
No, no, they do not.
Oh.
These dangerous and dilapidated structures.
You can see it from two oh nine?
No, these, these are the ha- the houses, the.
These are specific.
Two specific properties that are falling over, but that might qualify for the county program. But it might be discussed.
Correct.
The county's right.
Program, so hoping that that can help with this, but uh. They both need to be uh taken down.
Right.
The one you can see easily in the pictures needs to come down. There's no doors.
One on Cool Box.
Yeah. The other one, the other one is not much better.
And was it Walker?
Yeah.
Drive.
Nobody can, nobody can live in these houses or whatever.
Alright, so there's been a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Yes, Joel.
Who's retiring, whether it's dangerous or dilapidated, coming from complaints from neighbors or?
Well, they they reported it. The zoning officer went out.
Oh, so there are only a couple of structures being looked at or?
The ones that were reported to the zoning officer, two. Yeah.
I didn't know whether it was that there would go out and locate structures. They've already done an investigation into it.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, right?
Yeah.
And they're, yeah. So the zoning.
They want to formalize the investigation now.
Yes, Charlie.
Just for clarification, if it doesn't indicate for two only, you kind of, when you read it, kind of give me a personal, that maybe something is going to two. Other places, so let's. Clarification is just two only is this gone?
Yes. Yes. So, um, when you take somebody's house down, there's a a lot you have to do. We want to make sure that we. Give all the notice and everything that we can. Or, yes, Joel. It it depends.
No, it's always in.
No, we 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 hire a contractor, then we lean half the property for it. But we budgeted.
It's always the first intent of the township to have the property owner.
Right.
Demolish and raise it. The township doesn't want to get in the business of. Of raising structures, but ultimately the township is able, if if it's a dangerous structure. And it's causing a potential nuisance and the property owner is delinquent, you know, they don't ever refuse to clean up or take it down. The township does have. An avenue to take, uh, to take upon the township to take it down and remove the property, it would remove the.
In the past, we couldn't locate the owner. The owner just completely abandoned the building and wouldn't, you know, respond. Yeah, put ads in the paper and stuff, so there was a whole. A whole um process to follow, just to make sure.
He may want to find you around that shirt and when that one crew ball broke, because I remember. When it was falling apart, someone came to my office and they were getting a mortgage. People that come near that house. Somehow they died. There was somebody living there for a while. And they they gave it disappeared. And I am a few years now, but.
Unfortunately, that's why it takes so long.
The garage following in on it.
But that's why, you know, people say, why are you knocking it down? Well, it'd be great to knock it down. You got to follow the rules, otherwise.
Yeah, they'll come back and play you in town.
Right.
And people are reluctant to do anything with properties because they have this dream that they're going to rebuild and they want to make sure they're going to lease rebuild what they, what they had there. So if you take it all down and the foundation goes over and it's only a quarter of an acre. All of a sudden, wait, you can't build on it now because you need one acre and that, you know.
I should know the township I told you about. Um, down at the corner of where the ancient thirty seven was located.
Yeah.
Is that the house on the other side, that blue house? Is that Mills Smithfield? There's somebody living in there.
At Smithfield. They have a cracked building, don't expect it. You can go see him.
Okay, any other, there's been a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, uh, all in favor?
I can motion alter the sale of the nineteen ninety nine Jeep Cherokee on the Elizabeth.
Any comments or questions?
If we get fifteen hundred dollars, I'll be surprised.
Will they if you admit it?
Uh, we'd probably put a minimum fifteen hundred, but. I mean. There may be some local interest. Just because of its prior use, but.
It's an artifact.
Yeah.
There's been a motion. Was there a second? A second, okay, Mark second. Any comments or other comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, um, any public comment? Anyone? Yes.
So just want to give an update on what's going on with the people in Ridge and former Deerfield. Uh, the owner of that altar right there, I've been doing it. Uh, we've been taking all the former, all the beds that were in the room, sheets, blankets, everything, and I've been delivering them to. People in need throughout the community. We delivered thirty two beds. To people around our community, where people own two sets of sheets and blankets, every bed tile. So I think that's really great change. And we're giving back in there.
I thought you were going to say you you were going to bring it to the cleanup.
No, no, not with you that.
When you asked.
He was rooting around having taken down the east end. And I said, these are in decent shape. I think we're applying to people who use them. And I was not the hell of a sponsor, but it was like. Yeah, 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 I need two, I need three. We saw all the Toyota running around this past weekend. We backed out of this office. That was me going to Beverly Hills. I couldn't find a truck, so I was just on that Jeep. Maybe we just run that around. But yeah, we were turning something on this past weekend. Whoever tells them more night again, so.
Well, thank you.
It's not to me. It's thanks to K V and the owner of the building. I'm just. They just prepared a search. They just thrown away or anything else, etc. People get used to it, straight.
Any other public comments?
Apparently there are nice uh northern lights all around this front.
Yeah, what did I tell you? I'll be, I'll be.
I'll be out looking.
Yeah. Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Alright, thank you for that. I can't wait to see one.